Two minutes.
Okay, this Drew Deman, I'm at four six four zero Gordon Street. Three oh two one three, it's the formerly Fairburn part of South Fulton. In light of the now public controversy over the fractious discussion of police retention bonuses, it has become necessary to zoom out and take a look at the issue from a different.
In light of the now public controversy.
I'm glad to hear council having a conversation about pay for public safety personnel besides police. I personally only had two experiences with our local police, one sort of positive and another rather unhelpful. That said, I have no reason to impugn the city of South Fulton PD at this time. However, I question the validity and ethics of a council member bringing up the issue of police retention bonuses into a meeting for which it was not on the agenda and proceeding to disrupt the conduct of the meeting by insisting on having the discussion despite the mayor's assurance that the issue would be discussed at this month's meeting. Furthermore, I'd like to point out that our city's budget already allocates significant funds to the cops, perhaps at the expense of appropriately funding other departments. Personally, I'd like to see bonuses for city employees that do not favor police as centrally important to public safety as there are many other factors to public safety than simply policing. The improper insertion of this discussion into the agenda was disruptive, awkward and unhelpful and resulted in yet another needless public attack on Mayor Khalid by members of council. Can we please stop the personality conflicts and get to city business? Citizens are unhappy and would like to see a functional government that works together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Deman. Mr. Mayor, Council, I will read the remaining comments we have in the remaining twenty minutes we have left. Comment by Rose Marie Hodges, who lives on Bellwood Circle in District Three. I think she originally wanted to make a comment regarding police officer and speed, be speed observance and street plates. Next is Linda Britain, who lives on Ena Road in District One. She states, our policemen, law enforcement, our first respondents putting their life in danger at all time with high crimes all over Georgia. Next is Ruth Webster Lewis, who lives on Jasper Way in District Two. We need to support law enforcement on in our community. With the high turnover rate, we need to do all we can to attract and retain our police force. Next is Sonya Patterson, who lives on Haley Circle in District Two. She says, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I would like to say that I am in support of actions to ensure the retention of our police department and other safety departments. I just saw where East Point had an advertisement that they may destabilize our safety. If the desire is to ensure all employees get raises, can you consider taking care of our first responders in the midst of a pandemic? And then revisit the remaining staff separately. I am also not opposed to bonuses based on performance. I do not agree with across the board bonuses just because it should be based on performance. Lastly, while I appreciate the observance of Kwanzaa, I think we should maybe consider early leave, maybe three PM on these days and maybe one day off during that week, subject to the manager's approval. I did not agree with every Friday off in the summer. We need to understand the impact of our taxes for our taxpayers. I think further discussion and maybe reallocation of funds from somewhere else can be considered to help find some of these plans, fund some of these plans. Thank you for your time. Next is Mrs. Adisa Aaron, who lives on Makeover Court in District Five to City Council. I am writing to request that that the veto of the police retention and recruitment done by Mayor Khalid be overridden by the City Council. It is important that we have public safety and not have the funds available. Not having the funds available could cause there to be an issue with public safety. I'm also writing to support a bonus raise for all city of South Fulton employees. I'm requesting that the City Council pass the legislation to make that happen. Respectfully, Adisa Aaron, resident of the city of South Fulton. Next is Nicholas Williams, who lives on Button Road in District Two. He states, I am one of the eighty officers who transitioned from the Fulton County Police Department. I transitioned to South Fulton because I wanted to maintain the established relationships and partnerships and because I wanted to be a pioneer in this new city. I've been given opportunities for growth through career development and training under Chief Meadows leadership. I've been recognized for my accomplishments and I'm very happy to serve the citizens of this great city. Since the inception of the city of South Fulton, the police department has received unwavering support from city leaders. However, I'm disappointed in the recent shift of support. South Fulton police officers feel disrespected. Displaying the hiring bonus, delaying the hiring bonus doesn't help us fill vacant beats in the restructured beat design, which could delay backup in the event of a critical incident. I am a son, a husband, a father of three beautiful children. The delay of the retention and recruitment program is an insult to my livelihood. It's obvious that we have overwhelming support from the council members. Unfortunately, their votes will get us the things we need to be successful as an agency. Next is Pamela Harris, who lives on Lion Avenue in District One. I'm requesting that our District One Councilmember Catherine Ral vote in favor of the city of South Fulton forensic audit. Audits are essential to delivering an objective and independent view of our government programs and services. It may help to provide accountability to use to the use of public funds. If there is nothing to hide, this request should not be a problem. Neighbors, stay involved. Your livelihood will depend on it. Next is David Rector, who lives on Edgewater Cove in District Four. I strongly disagree with the negative light in which the city of South Fulton is being portrayed in the news and social media. It is important that our elected officials work as a team and place the best interests of the city of South Fulton first. We had four years of nationally elected officials acting badly. Please place emotion and self-interest aside and work as a team so that history reads that you led and left a legacy that demonstrates the power of leadership. Next is Mrs. Naima Gil Yard, who lives on Greyhawk Way in District Four. High Mayor Council, the operations audit will probably focus on how effective and efficient the city's policies and procedures are. There are vulnerabilities, how critical they are, how they are being addressed and if they are known. I hope cost efficiency will be included in a review of strategic plans as they relate to development outcomes and plans. The final report should provide information helpful to citizens, staff and elected officials in terms of where we are and changes necessary to where we need to be based on strategies. For all these reasons and more, the elected body should support the operational audit. We are approaching our fifth year as a city with much turnover. Uh, next is, um, I think I read his already. Michelle Bruington, who lives on Jack and Arlene in District Two. While I believe branding our city is important, I would like to suggest not branding the city as the blackest city in America. I'm very proud of my blackness and the successful black people in my community and throughout the city of South Fulton. But I am aware that unfortunately, there are businesses that do not necessarily feel that bringing their business to the blackest city in America is in their best interest. I often read comments on Nextdoor of desired businesses that residents would love to see come to our area, Whole Foods, Sprouts, just to name a few. I would much better prefer our city to be known for the most progressive city in America or the most eclectic city in America or the most desirable city to live, work and play in America. Or even the prettiest city in America, the safest city in America. How about the city with the best schools in America? I think our blackness, in addition to one or more of the before mentioned, would just add to the icing on the cake. We don't necessarily need to market who we are. They'll see it. In addition, we do not want diverse businesses to to want to come to our city for the simple fact that we are just as profitable than the Vining's, Alpharetta, Woodstock and other surrounding white cities. Next is Ray Pollock, who lives on Kane Wood Drive in District Six. She states, for employees that have annual vacation plans and family commitments, are they allowed to acknowledge in addition to the July and December dates being implemented? Next is Betty Archer, who lives on Woodstone Court in District Two. States, while I understand the mayor's reason for vetoing the police officers' bonuses last month, I feel strongly that when the discussion is over, officers should receive the incentive bonuses for retention and new hires. We need strong, we need a strong police presence in South Fulton. Also feel it is time for the city council to have in-person council meetings. There is no logical reason, in my opinion, why they should not be in person. Next is Corel Driscoll, who lives on Walnut Ridge in District Two. He states, although the demographics reflect the majority African-American population, the city of South Fulton agenda should not seek to ostracize its other demographics. The operation of the city is not a Black Lives Matter movement. Our city should be in full support of the success in its pursuit to keep our city safe. Recently, our mayor has admitted to his intention to flat fund the police. That is intention to harm the city he professes to love. I'm asking council to support our police department and grant their request. If the council would consider employees change in workdays and hours, please consider adjusting salaries for the time not working. Today, their salaries are based on forty hour work weeks. If that time is decreased, I believe their salary should be decreased. I am sympathetic to the employees, but more sympathetic to the property owners that support the operations of the city. Next is Clyde King, who lives on Pepper Mill Lane in District Six. He states, everyone do me a blessed service. Make an effort to assure the citizens that the mayor and council of the city of South Fulton demonstrate and conduct yourselves with the power of black love. To say we are the blackest city in America is embarrassing with the infighting that is obvious at every meeting and in the media. It's wearing me out, embarrassing, embarrassing. Keep all disputes in the executive meetings and learn how to compromise together without the, without being disagreeable. In other words, Mayor, keep your horses in in the barn. Once they get out, it's hard to get them back in and lock the door. Keeping in mind our history and our ancestors' tears, suffering injustice, breakup of our families and death for four hundred plus years that have allowed the city to exist with black leadership. Your job is to grow the city with goods and services, improve education, jobs, construction, exposure programs and parks and recreation for all ages and more. These things help us to enjoy work, play and living safely in our communities. Ultimately, how are we going to develop talent, skill, productive citizens and keep them here? Many people died for you all to be in your positions with the hopes of the fighting for justice, voting rights, healthcare, education, keeping our families together for generations, et cetera. We are a people of love through all of that and our contributions to the world and humanity are enormous and worthy to make that claim. How about loving ourselves? Next is from Helen Vance, who lives on Montelli Circle in District Six. Dear Mayor and Council, I like the idea of Summer Fridays. This is a perk many companies have successfully implemented. I would caution, this perk cannot be at the expense of customer service. If I may suggest, consider this perk to rotate among employees within the same departments. There still needs to be someone to see customers, answer calls and respond to emails. Next is Mrs. Glenda Collins. Who lives on Morning Creek in District Five. In order to keep and maintain public safety and keeping us safe, they deserve a bonus. This is vital for us to maintain our daily lives and feel safe. The more police, the less likely criminals are to visit the city and commit crimes. Please do not compare other employees to this job because the danger is real. When you call the city, no one answers the phone and the recording says we will call you back in twenty-four hours. Only the police should get a bonus in order to keep and grow the police force. And this is what is needed to help keep us in the same city. Next is a comment from Harry, who lives on Lindy Lane in District Three. Uh, he states, yes, to forensic audit, I support the mayor on employees, employee pay increase. Next is Ursula Walker, who lives on Highland Lakes Court in District Three. I would like to know why I saw our police chief on the news complaining about our mayor not giving him money. He wanted when he wanted it. From reading details, the issue was the timing of getting the raises, not that it was not going to happen at all like the chief portrayed it. The news person said the chief has a picture of the mayor on his website saying defund the police, which is always taken the wrong way. Then the chief said he will have the backing of the city council to change the mayor's veto in the next meeting. So why didn't he just handle it in the meeting instead of on the news? Trying to make the mayor look bad makes us all look bad. Next is Marcia Clemendor, who lives on Ardina Lane West in District Six. Her comment is, Kimberly Mill Road and Cardi's Circle are martyr bus routes. Parking on these streets creates a major safety hazard for traffic flow. We have complained for months on Seek Click Fix as well as directly to the police. But the parking continued until Friday, January twenty-eighth, when a major accident occurred from the car being parked on Kimberly Mill Road. What was really amazing is that the officer towed the other cars, but left the parked car that caused the accident on the street. The entire rim was smashed and undrivable. We had to call the police department on Saturday, January twenty-ninth, spoke to Cobra King, where she in turn had this unsafe vehicle removed. The police needs better training. This should not have occurred. Next is Norrie Stevens, who lives on Maze Lane in District One. Comment is, first and foremost, thank you for all for your service to our new city. I would like to request that our leaders of this city to stop airing our dirty laundry to the media. That includes all platforms. This is creating a stain and cloud over our city. It would not sit well with investors and potential new residents. In order to be South Fulton forever, we must be South Fulton together. We can agree to disagree, but let's do that at a table and not in front of the cameras. This creates unnecessary noise and major issues are not heard. Second, I'm all for wellness days, work incentives. However, please keep in mind that the public sector must operate different from the private to provide service to the public. I hope all factors and variables are being considered regarding the week of Kwanzaa, the first week of July and also Summer Fridays. Everything always looks good on paper, but then financial reality kicks in. Next is Will Brown, who lives on Cascade Road in District One. He states, we need sidewalks along Cascade Road, Dafford to Fulton Industrial. Next is Richard Snellings, who lives on Lock Lomond Trail in District One. He states, I've heard all the sides of this retention bonus that has been turned into a political issue and Mayor Khalid's position on this issue is intentionally being twisted. For the edification of the public, our mayor never was opposed to law enforcement receiving a retention bonus. From the beginning, he has said that all city departments should receive a retention bonus, including law enforcement. But because of the misunderstanding, the mayor put this in writing newsletter. This has been all over social media and it just kills me how surrogates of the council are intentionally twisting his position into a defund the police narrative when the entire time he agreed with everything, including the police chief who ran to the media, probably at the request of council. The intent of the veto was to ensure that conversations are being held to ensure all employees receive the retention bonus. To the city staff, I say to you, it's one person fighting for you to receive a retention bonus and that one person is your mayor. Per paid very close to the council members who vote to overturn the mayor's veto. Their vote is a vote to take money out of your pocket and out of your household. In regards to the forensic audit, I support Mayor Khalid's position on this as well. Next is Jewel Johnson, who lives on Orkney Lane in District One. She states, uh, to Mayor Council, the operational audit is a good idea because it looks beyond the annual financial audit and focuses on performance and possibilities for improvement. It gives staff an opportunity to review their performance and opens the door for the city to find areas that need attention and improvement that would not be obvious in a financial audit. The audit is is positive and should be supported by council. Citizens need to have faith in how our city operates and independent review would help. Uh, next is Jay Parker, who lives on Lock Lomond Trail in District One. He states, Mr. Mayor, the council is in opposition to you. The police chief doesn't like you. The governor is now against you. It says a lot about your character and integrity that you are so willing to stand up to all these forces that are against you and you are willing to and eager to do what's right by the people of South Fulton. We have South City of South Fulton Facebook page that all the council members post and that is operated by East Point City Council person. It's a hate group and all these people do is talk bad about the mayor. They hate him because he is not Bill. Mrs. Gums has an intern that is going around. Yeah, I can't read the rest of this. Uh, let me repeat, an intern. My council rep in District One sent text messages out telling people to comment in support of her agenda. She is up for reelection in District One. We don't have to take this. Lastly, why is the police chief going against the mayor? That is ultimate disrespect. Never in the history of the city has a police chief got involved in a policy debate. This city is something else. Atlanta, please come save us via annexation. And next is Jacqueline Perkins, who lives on Pepper Mill Lane. Regarding public safety, can we please work on installing speed bumps in subdivision neighborhoods where speeding is an issue? We have too many people who continuously drive fifty miles per hour faster through our neighborhood streets and ignore stop signs. The police cannot be everywhere at all times, so we must use other tools to stop bad behavior. The speed cameras in the school zones are helping, but it's limited to the school zone. DeKalb County has speed bumps in a lot of its communities because they and the cameras work to deter speeding. It shouldn't take signed petitions or a tragedy to proactively prevent destruction and deaths. Mr. Mayor and Council, we have reached the thirty minute time limit.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much and thank you everyone for your comments. Can you all hear me? Someone just put a thumbs up or something if.
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Uh, we've been getting a couple of, thank you. Um, we've been getting a couple of complaints about, uh, the the audio. Uh, but hopefully this will, hopefully this will be our last Zoom meeting. Um, go ahead and sound the next item and those people that we did not get to, uh, Mr. Adams has sent us all of your comments and we will respond accordingly. Thank you all so much for your feedback. We do value it.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I, I want to also just, uh, note for the record that we did receive a lot of comments um, regarding a liquor license application. Um, BP gas station on, I believe, Campbellton, uh, Cascade Palmetto Road. That case, um, uh, will be heard at the next regular meeting. Just wanted to let the public know that, that, uh, we did not ignore your, your comments, but, uh, we do have those and the public hearing will be at the February twenty-second, uh, meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, I believe the next item is our ARP. I'm sorry, our, uh, our audit. Um, while we bring those folks on there, I, I will just open by saying we've had lots of comments, uh, requests for audits, for forensic audits, for, for all of these things. And, uh, for the edification of our council and our public, we are going to have, uh, two presenters now explaining both the difference between all of these audits and how they actually play out on the ground. Uh, we will start with our, uh, annual auditor auditor, Maldona Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, can anyone hear me okay? So I'll be pretty brief to allow some additional time for David Roberts of our governmental advisory practice to kind of discuss the citywide operational, um, audit and what that entails. But, um, as far as, um, you know, the financial, um, audit, which is, you know, done by us as your external and independent auditor, you know, the main purpose of that is to give an opinion on your financial statements to determine whether or not it's materially correct and free from material misstatements, whether caused by fraud or um, due to errors. And so when we talk about opinion units and giving an opinion on those opinion units, we're talking about as of your most recent, um, completed audit fiscal year 2020, your governmental activities, which includes your, your governmental funds on a full accrual basis. So your general fund, special revenue funds, capital project funds on a full accrual basis with long-term debt and capital assets included in that. So that's your governmental activities. And then your discreetly presented component unit, which is your development authority, we give an opinion on it. And then on each individual major fund. And so as of 2020, it was your general fund, which is always a major fund, is your operating fund. Uh, and then your T-SLOSS fund, your, uh, capital uh, projects fund and your capital grants project funds, those were your individual major funds that we gave individual opinions on. And then on your aggregate remaining fund information, which is your municipal court and then the nine major governmental funds, um, including your confiscated asset fund, hotel multi-tax tax fund as well as the multi-grant fund. So we give an opinion on those opinion units that they're materially correct. And we perform, you know, various audit procedures on your balance sheet, cash accounts payable, accounts receivables, things of that nature. And then also revenues and expenditures. And again, we're not testing a hundred percent of your population, but we're, you know, running samples and, and, and also scoping balances and testing those amounts over scope. We're not required, uh, orders are not required to give an opinion or assurance on your, on the city's internal control structure. As external independent orders, we're only required to gain an understanding of those controls that are in place, but not to give an opinion on those. Now, if the city receives and spends seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more in federal award programs, then you're required to have a separate single audit and compliance with the uniform guidance. And so that we do give opinions on pertaining to single audits of federal war programs. So with that being said, I want to turn it over to David Roberts to kind of discuss, uh, what uh, the operation, I see the wide operational performance audit looks like and then the difference between that and forensic audit. So with that being said, David Roberts.
Great. Thank you, Doug. Uh, but, but thank you, Mayor and, and members of council. And I, I know we have a presentation out, but if possible, uh, I believe you have both the native PowerPoint file and an Adobe, if, if possible, if you could show the native file, I, I think things get a little jumbled when it's PDF. Uh, but I will jump in, uh, and, and I'll be succinct. I know you have a full agenda and certainly happy to answer any questions that you have. Uh, so I'm going to provide an overview of, of what a performance and operational audit is. Um, talk a little bit about, uh, objectives, goals, other municipalities that have gone through this process uh, across the country and nearby. Uh, and also as Doug mentioned, that discuss the differences between a, an operational audit, a financial audit and a forensic audit. So first, uh, in terms of performing a, the citywide or organizational wide performance and operational audit, it's an objective assessment. So it's an independent party, uh, coming in, uh, based on proven method tested before, uh, to review and evaluate core functions. Uh, those four core functions can include operations, communications, customer service. Uh, they can include others, but I, I think those are the three broad buckets, uh, that most city or municipal um, services can, can fall within. Uh, scope includes focusing on, on all departments and it really looks at the operating environment. Uh, what are the key services? How are things organized from an organizational structure? What are the workflow and key business processes? The use of technology, uh, performance, governance, policies and procedures and service delivery models. And service delivery models gets into how you're providing the service. Uh, are you doing it internally? Are you using external outsourced providers? And then how is that available to the customer? Is it available through electronic means, uh, manual, et cetera? At, at a high level, uh, the, you know, simplistic, most simplistic way to boil down. At at a high level, uh the, you know, simplistic, most simplistic way to boil down what a performance and operational audit is, it is, i- it identifies what is working well so that we can replicate that throughout the city. Uh what needs improvement so that we can enhance that? And then what are our areas of risk and concern so that we can really focus our attention on that to mitigate risks? On slide three, uh we talk about the objectives. And and certainly, we want to understand leadership's visions and goals for the future. Um there there's no one way um to do an operational or performance audit. Um again, want to align and understand leadership's vision for the future so that those recommendations and roadmap can be can be tailored. As I said before, we want to identify areas that are performing well to replicate. Where are opportunities to enhance operations? Uh how does your city operations and performance compare to leading practices? Whether that's other public sector or other private sector organizations. I certainly develop meaningful recommendations to enhance operations. And one thing that that we always do is we create a a detailed strategic roadmap uh describing how our recommendations should be implemented so that the organization has a a detailed blueprint of how to move forward. A specific goals, uh obviously, you know, and I think one of the the persons during the public comments mentioned this. You know, a goal certainly is to optimize efficiency and effectiveness. Um obviously, we want to reduce risk and maintain compliance. And certainly, a lot of lot of risk related to to federal funds, as I heard earlier in the meeting. Uh want to strengthen internal controls, policies, procedures and and governance. Certainly important to the citizens to increase transparency and accountability and and enhance customer service. Uh so why now for the city of South Fulton? Uh on on the next slide, you know, I obviously have your your motto here in terms of, you know, where where you want to be. And I and I love that. And and I guess the 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 question to ask is, you know, where do you as a city want to be five years from now? And and I think that, you know, where you are right now, you're coming up on five years of incorporation. It's it's a great time to take an objective look on your previous five years. What are some of the successes? What are some of the lessons learned? Uh now that we've grown significantly, where do we want to be one, three, five years from now and how do we get there? Uh and so it, the last bullet, you know, this type of operational performance audit, it assesses your current environment and it helps your future vision become reality to achieve your goals. Uh I will be, for the sake of time, a little short on the next couple. Uh but this is about our advisory practice. Uh so my name again is David Roberts. I I lead uh our firm's government advisory practice. Have more than twenty-two years uh of experience consulting at the federal, state and local level. Uh we've led numerous projects uh across the country, um providing similar services. And just in terms of some of the the neighbors that we have, um if if you look uh on slide six, uh numerous Georgia agencies, uh City of Atlanta, City of Forest Park, DeKalb County, Fulton County, Gwinnett County, numerous others um have have undertaken similar projects. Okay, let's move to slide seven. Uh as I mentioned, um whenever it's if similar audit is done, y- you want to ensure that you have a methodology. Um you need to know to your stakeholders that we we have a plan and and we have rigor in terms of how we're doing it. And that our recommendations are based on quantitative and qualitative data. And the methodology that we've developed uh is called Compass. And that's something that we leverage for all of our assessment and transformation projects. Uh slide eight, uh for the sake of time, I'll be uh I'll this. But in terms of a work plan, you know, this provides high-level steps for how we would go about conducting an operational audit. Obviously, we we meet with you and and we have initial planning and really define that scope of work and and understand what it is that you want to get out of it. Uh once we define that scope, we gather lots of information. So lots of information um is requested. We typically do anonymous surveys. Uh it's a great way to get anonymous feedback. Uh and we don't report anything or opine on anything just because somebody says it in a survey. Uh but i- if we identify trends, we go and see if we can seek evidence to validate that point or or disprove it. Uh certainly benchmark to other organizations. Lot of field work. We're very collaborative with you, understanding where you want to go. And so that our recommendations are tailored for your environment specifically, again, to help you achieve your your vision. And and validation and reporting, our process is very rigorous and goes through multiple collaboration and communication steps to ensure that we're all on sync and that there are no surprises. A slide nine um touches on what the mayor mentioned to Doug as well. So I'm going to give you my my thoughts on the difference between a financial forensic and operational performance audit. Uh as Doug mentioned, so Doug is is your financial auditor. And he, so a financial audit, it's an objective examination of the financial statements. So it it does provide an opinion on basically whether the finances are um are submitted or stated correctly uh based on a reasonable uh level of assurance. And throughout the process, there certainly are sampling techniques that are that are used um to identify potential areas of of fraud, waste or abuse. A forensic audit, it's very targeted. And and so what I mean by that is the scope is very uh very limited in terms of what it is that we're looking for. And it's really focused on obtaining facts. And I would say it's uh what I call a postmortem. So you're looking at something that has already occurred and determining those facts. Uh what happened? How did it happen? If there was fraud, waste or abuse, how do we prevent it from happening in the in the future? Uh and again, so very, very targeted. Um so an example of a forensic audit could be looking at uh the past five years of a specific grant and really wanting to understand how did we spend the money? How did we administer it? Uh was there any indication of fraud, waste or abuse? And what can we do differently going going forward? Uh the third audit that we've talked about, an operational performance audit. Uh these can be done citywide. These can be done focused on uh specific departments or functions. Uh but they're much more broad in nature. Uh and they're really focused on understanding your current state. So how are you doing things now? How are things working now? And not just what your policies and procedures say, how things are supposed to work, but how they're actually working in reality. Uh I comparing your current state to leading practices, coming up with opportunities for improvement and and again, ways to achieve your future goals. Um the operational performance audit really is focused on enhancing efficiency and effectiveness, uh increasing performance, service delivery, customer service, et cetera. So it's really about transformation and and in my words. Uh and it's very strategic in in nature. Uh last slide is slide ten. Uh and and this really just relates to independence. Uh as as we are your financial auditor, um there are certain independence considerations that we go through uh for all of our advisory projects. Um the type of work in terms of us providing an operational uh performance audit for the city, uh certainly does not violate our independence. Um we've done it for numerous clients. It's acceptable under the Yellow Book, which provides the guidance for that. And again, we're we're very thoughtful in terms of um actual and perceived conflicts of interest. And uh um, you know, if you were to engage us to perform such an audit, there are no independence issues or conflicts of interest there. We do maintain separate teams. Uh I'm in a separate uh practice from the financial auditors. And uh again, we do maintain separation of of teams in performing the work. Uh and we have performed and helped numerous audit clients across the country uh with similar services. So I know that was a lot. I will pause there and uh um yield back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you so much. Um we just want to put some meat on the bones of this. That was a lot of theory. If you could just go back to that that slide that shows the the three different audits, there have been there have been lots of calls for audits and I think it's important uh as an elected official that we listen to what people are asking for, but hear what it is that they really want. And so people may not, it may seem like they want a forensic audit, but maybe they want something else. And and to move this out of theory into practice. And uh our second uh speaker and then we'll take questions from all three of you. Uh it's Black History Month, so I I'm so happy. Our second speaker is a bit of living history, uh is Mr. Kirkland Carden. Twenty seventeen, he was elected to Duluth City Council, becoming the first millennial and the first African-American council member in that city. He is now uh the youngest member of the Gwinnett County Commission and sits on the internal they have committee. And I just wanted uh you, Mr. Carden, to to talk about the audit that you all are going through now, why you chose it and what it is helping you all to figure out.
Sure. Uh good evening, everybody. Thanks again for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. Uh Creed did a great job with my introduction. Um so a little context. Uh November twenty twenty, I was elected to the Board of Commissioners. We have a five-member board, uh four districts, one chairwoman. So we had an election in November twenty twenty. We had three new board members join uh the Gwinnett B O C. Uh so a chair, brand-new chairwoman, new District One, new District Three commissioners. Um prior to that, in twenty eighteen, we had another election cycle where we elected uh um two new people. So over the span of four years, you had complete board turnover. Right? Um this is the first time you had Democrats elected to the Board of Commissioners in twenty eighteen in I want to say thirty-six years. And you had a solid Democratic majority, first time in thirty-eight years. So I saw that to say that there was a lot of uh uh turnover. And these new members, they uh, we wanted to take a new set of eyes to county operations. So one of the first things we did when we came into office in December, after we got sworn in, is we got with staff and we said we would like to have a comprehensive, robust performance audit. Um one of my good friends and colleagues, Jasper Watkins, who represents District Three in the Board of Commissioners, he has a military background. And when he would take over different commands, he said I would know every pill and every bullet I have in my post. And that's the kind of mindset we wanted to take with Gwinnett County Operations, right? We wanted to know what machine or yeah, what machine we were inheriting, right? And we worked with staff on the scope. So we, all five of us got together and worked with our CFO, Maria Woods, to get an idea of priorities for us, what we're measuring. And then what was really important to me was the deliverable document, right? Making sure that we have recommendations um from the folks doing this work so we can act and follow. Last thing we wanted was just a document saying, hey, these are your problems. Good luck trying to solve them. So with that said, uh January, so I'm going out, we do some things a little differently. Uh January of every year, we vote on the new fiscal budget. So though it was our first meeting, we voted on a budget that was prepared and created by the outgoing B O C. However, we were able to work with our predecessors pretty closely um to get four hundred thousand dollars in the budget programmed for performance audit. Um we, again, like I said before, we worked with their CFO on the scope and we were ready to put out a RFI. We did that. Um we had a number of people uh submit applications or submit uh uh or respond to the RFI. And uh we end up going with the same group that also helps us in our annual audits that we prepare for the state. So um I think that was a good move. Um again, that wasn't really our move to make. It was more so the scoring committee. That's how our procurement policy is set up. Uh but we are in the process of still doing this performance audit. It just started late last year. They started um working with the different uh departments. We have some twelve different departments in Gwinnett County Government. I believe we started with, uh was it planning? Yeah, I think planning was the first department to uh to start the performance audit. We plan on having a finished document later this year and we're just going to follow up on those recommendations. Um I think that pretty much sums it up. I'll be happy to, you know, take any questions if there are any.
Yes. Sorry, I missed my phone. Um the first person I see in the queue is Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you all for your um presentations. Um my first question is, um Mr. Moses, um you have been performing audits for the city of South Fulton um since the init- since fiscal year seventeen. So um in performing our audits, first of all, can you tell for the education of the public what type of audit you are completing um annually for the city of South Fulton?
Sure. So we're doing the financial and compliance audit of the city. And again, we're coming in and we're auditing um your balances. Uh again, we're not testing a hundred percent of everything. Um you know, some things we might might very well test a hundred percent of, certain receivables and things of that nature. We're testing your your cash, you know, it's auditing your bank reconciliations at year end. Uh through confirmations and things of that nature. Uh recalculating, refilling, you know, your bank reconciliations. We're testing your receivables and looking at subsequent collections. We're testing your accounts payable. We're searching for unrecorded liabilities at year end to make sure that balance is complete. Um testing your payroll, approved payroll, testing your capital assets. Uh making sure your capital assets are materially correct. Adjustments that resulted in findings. You've seen that in your reports as well. So we're auditing your financial statements as of year end and giving an opinion on those uh different opinion units that I mentioned earlier, those different buckets. Uh and so that's kind of what you get in a nutshell from the financial audit. We're not coming in and auditing, again, like I mentioned earlier, the city's internal control structure and giving an opinion on internal controls. We're not required to do that as external and independent auditors, but we're required to kind of do some walkthrough procedures to get an understanding of those controls in place. But we're not relying on those internal controls to reduce our substantive testing that I alluded to earlier as far as auditing balances and things of that nature.
And um um just for the public um education, the all of our financial and compliance audits are posted on our website under the finance and accounting tab. And every last one of them are on there from seventeen up until the uh twenty. And it's current, and you all are working on fiscal year twenty twenty uh one now. Um the question that I have is that, did you all find anything that would throw up a red flag that we will need to go do a deeper dive or a specific scope for forensic audit?
No, not for a forensic audit. Uh you know, if we came in and noted where there was a potential for fraud or we actually discovered fraud. Or if during our testing of bank reconciliations, uh we found out that y'all had five bank accounts that was never reported in the city's financial statements or on the trial balance report that no one was made aware of. And then I would say, you know what y'all need to do was uh either a performance audit specifically dealing with those bank accounts that haven't been reported and look at all of that activity over the last five years since the city was in existence. If these accounts were never reported. So I haven't run across anything like that, you know, like I alluded to earlier. You know, we've had findings for, you know, things that were not adjusted in the city's trial balance reports that were provided to us to audit. Um so we, you know, we've always had things like that and, you know, we make, you know, those adjustments. And if they're deemed material, we'll make findings. And we always had some uh recommendations for improvements uh based on things that we noted during the audit. Uh but uh nothing to warrant a forensic audit per se.
And 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 for the education of public, uh it was just stated that forensic audits are specific in scope and they are typically looking for doing a deeper dive when um for fraud or and they're also uh used in court processes as well um for sometimes criminal um action against people. Um so you all gave the three examples of what is a financial audit. Um you all gave an example of what is a uh forensic audit. And you gave an example uh what is a financial audit. Now, is there, I mean, um operational and performance audit? And so can you speak a little bit about the difference between um uh forensic and a performance audit? Um both of them are, seem to be, uh well, both of them are, I'm not gonna say seem to be. Uh both of them are narrow in scope, but can you speak a little bit about the performance audit as well? I see the operational and performance at the bottom.
Sure, I'm probably let uh David kind of chime in as well. I'll give you an example. I had a client. Sure, I'm probably let uh David kind of chime in as well. I'll give you an example. I had a client um a few years back, they wanted to have a forensic audit done. So they had um a firm to come in and do a forensic audit and no- nothing really came out of that. It was, you know, suspicions of something happened, happening. Only thing that they found was issues with procurement, which was something that we had already cited in the financial audit, actually during a single audit of one of their federal grants.
Right.
So again, you know, a lot of people want to throw out that term and not necessarily, you know, what it really, you know, entails. And so a lot of times when, you know, I may have a new mayor and new city council member come on board and they want to have forensic audit done, and so I try to explain the benefits of of both and then I'll say, you know what? What you're trying to accomplish, we can do on a lesser scope uh and and do an actual performance audit or agreed-upon procedures and we can accomplish what you really are looking for through that. And so the the, to me, that's the difference. Um, um, but like a city-wide operational performance audit or assessment uh what what David has kind of built this proposal, this um presentation on. Me is much better and I've been recommending this to all of um the my clients that I've served. And like I said, Cedar Forest Park is one of my clients in which this was performed for them and uh it was well received, not only from the mayor and council, but all the way down to the various department uh directors and staff as well. Uh, David, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, no, I I I think you provided a good summary. I I think that again, just the forensic audit, i- it's very uh factual-based. Um, so at the end of the process, you you learn what happened and how it happened and how you can prevent it from happening in the future. Um, with with the operational performance audit, it's really about not not only how you're operating now, um, but where is it that you want to, how is it that you want to operate and deliver your services um i- i- in the future and and how do we close that gap from where you are now to where you want to be in the future? Again, it's much more, much more strategic and and much, much more transformative. Um, to give you a a cheesy metaphor, I I would say a forensic audit is like going to the doctor. It it tells you what's, tells you what's wrong with you, right? Whether you're in good health or something is wrong and here it is. I I would say going to a a life coach or some type of improvement, um whether it's counseling or working out, uh, that's much more transformative in making you the best you that you can be um based on your goals. And that's really more akin to the operational performance audit.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question for Mr. Carden. Uh, Mr. Carden, uh, before you became a commissioner, you were a council member for Duluth. Uh, do you recall uh Duluth going through any type of forensic audit process?
No, I I I do not. Um, I was on the city council there for two and a half years. Uh, we didn't really, we didn't do a forensic audit in my tenure. Uh, we did do the annual audits. Um, and we submitted that to the state. Um, you know, we really didn't do a performance audit. Um, because I was the first new council member in quite some time.
Right.
Council in Duluth. Uh, but I would say this, when we got elected to the Board of Commissioners, we had three new people that had all these cool ideas, right? For governance and county operations to improve customer service. And we also had some of the other board members too, the two other ones that were like, wow, I've got a governing majority here to work with. And I think the first thing this board wanted to do was make sure we had data to justify the proposed policy changes that would come from this board, right? So when you're you're hit in public, when you're hit with the media or from dissenters, hey, why are you doing this? This is a solution in search of a problem. We can point to that audit and say, well, actually, we did it, conducted a performance audit, right? And we looked at county operations and we found that these were the problems. And we also were given a set of recommendations to address those problems.
Well, Mr. Carden, I don't mean to cut you off, but I know we got other call. I want to get through my questions. Okay, and so how many, what's the budget for uh Gwinnett County?
Ooh, uh, two point zero seven billion dollars.
Okay, thank you. And so I did do some reading on Gwinnett County and you all have had historically some issues that predate you. You all had a commissioner that, you know, was convicted and have gone and is still and had gone to prison for uh, you know, for some um embezzlement and bribery. Uh, also, um, here recently, the all GOP requested a forensic audit, um, specific in scope over their election um process. And so, um, I can understand why, you know, it may have been a call for some forensic audit in certain areas, but let me ask you this. Have you all ever had a forensic audit on the entire county?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Right.
Um, yeah, no.
Okay, so what you all had was uh you all are uh currently undergoing a performance audit for all of the, for the entire county, or is it a specific scope?
So for the twelve departments, and I will say this, I just remembered, prior to taking office, we had a performance audit started under the last group in our Elections Division. And it was two-part, so I I I just wanted to add that as well, too.
Okay, all right. Okay, so you have out of your, you have twelve departments in Gwinnett and you said that you all are undergoing a performance audit for all of twelve of those departments?
Yes, ma'am.
And was there, and it was simply because there was basically new leadership and you all wanted to know, um, basically, what was the current state of the performance of those departments and how you need to improve efficiency and how you will want to do things differently in the future?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and how much was, if you don't mind, do you can you tell me the cost of that performance audit? Because you said you all have a two-point billion-dollar budget. Um, that's not even a fraction of our budget. How much was that uh that uh performance audit?
There were several bids. I believe the one that was selected came to one seventy, maybe one eighty. One eighty, that's a higher, somewhere in that ballpark, somewhere in that.
Hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you so much uh for coming and speaking with us and and I'm going to yield um after this last question for um Mr. Moses and Mr. Roberts. So the city of South Fulton has, and just based on Mr. Moses, you have audited our books from twenty seventeen to twenty up until now. You've just stated on the record, you don't, you don't, you didn't see anything that would have given you a red flag that we needed to do a forensic audit on um our um or anything of a specific scope of that nature. What about, have you seen anything that would give you a red flag that we need to do a performance audit on our entire city financials or uh department?
Yeah, I can definitely see the need for an operational assessment, a performance. Um, like I say, anytime you, you know, you all have had some turnover uh with, you know, management and staff, uh, being a fairly new city, um, you know, you want to kind of have this kind of done now, like David Roberts alluded to, to kind of see where you are and and have the ability to kind of make changes and improvements now versus waiting ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road and realize that you've been doing operationally something wrong. So to me, i- it makes sense to get it done now. A lot of governments, you know, haven't had something like this done and things, these problematic areas that kind of continues to build and build until, you know, it reaches, um, you know, a a a a critical point where you're having to have major changes done, major, you know, people, uh, major hires and things of that nature to kind of fix these issues and things of that nature, bringing in consultants and what have. So uh to me, it just makes sense uh for any government to have an operational assessment done. Uh, again, like I said, with cities, Cedar Forest Park, uh, they, you know, they got a new city manager and it was something that um he brought to the mayor and council that he wanted to have done, a citywide uh assessment, and that's when I brought David Roberts in to meet with them and he presented to the mayor and council and 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 they went with that. And so again, um, again, it was well received for them and um and and they're working on those uh recommendations and um as far as making improvements.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so uh the correct terminology that we need to be or the type that took the the direction that we need to be going in is operational, not forensic. Um, because it will give us an opportunity to go through each of our departments, um, give us the current state and then give us some future recommendations for efficiency. Again, forensic is uh for fraud. You know, you are looking for fraud waste uh or abuse. Um, and um typically issues for some type of criminal activity that has happened. Um, and I just think that uh we need to be careful before a yield with the terminology and what we say um colleagues, because um it is not a good narrative for um for us to uh go before our residents and encourage that we have, that we are in need of a forensic audit for this entire city. Uh, most of us have been on this council for five years and that doesn't speak to well of us um to say that we may have done something criminal or something um uh wrong in nature to even warrant a forensic audit. I hope that we would never get in that position where we would do, this city would be in a position where anything is warranted, where forensic audit is needed. Thank you. I will yield at this time. And thank you again for coming um and speaking with our council and giving us factual information. And again, thank you, um, Commissioner Carden.
All right, and next in the queue is Dr. Rowell.
Thank you for acknowledging me. Just a couple of questions. Um, one is for the city manager. If, um, one of the things she brought back to us that we are undertaking an operational um review of our Parks and Rec and Cultural Affairs Department, is that correct, City Manager Jones?
That is correct.
Um, are there any other departments or areas that you are um looking to bring back a recommendation to city council for us to take a closer look? And you, either you or the finance, I know our finance director, Mr. Leighton Dixon, is still getting acclimated, but um either of you can respond to that question?
Yeah, I mean, I'll I'll speak and I'll also let Karen speak as well. So, um, we started the process um in our Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department. Uh, we're not, we are using another auditing firm for that purpose, just to look at the operations. As my understanding, we should have uh findings from them very soon. They will be presenting that to me and of course, we will share that information with the council. Um, if necessary, yes, we will look at other departments. Uh, but right now, it was focused on that particular department. And Karen, if you have any other comments, uh, you can share those now.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. Uh, yes, I I agree with um City Manager Tammy has said. And also, we're we're kind of looking over in our purchasing department as as well, so. So hopefully, we will have something, as she said, um, soon, and I will definitely be back in touch with Doug and just kind of get some more information from them and just kind of take a little bit of a lead from from the auditors as well. Thanks.
And Ms. Dixon, can you re- uh, report on the requirements as it relates to the uh report of local government finances that um is submitted to D C A and how, you know, the city has responded since our inception?
Okay, you you want me to look into that or are you asking me to to look, uh, respond to that now, give some feedback on it?
Well, to explain for the public what that is and, um, well, I know for a fact that we're compliant, but explain to the public what that is in terms of our reporting and how that information is analyzed, if you, if you can speak to that.
Okay, all right. And uh and I definitely, if I, if you don't mind, I would like to turn that over to Doug because the the auditors are responsible for submitting those reports um for us to D C A. So if Doug is available, I can let him speak to to how they handle that that process once we have signed off on the actual um audit presentation in itself.
Sure. So once the the audit is completed, and so we, you know, we process your is what is called now ACT for the Annual Comprehensive Annual, uh, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Um, so we some, we'll provide that to you all and then what the city would do is submit that to the uh Georgia Department of Audits. And so what, when they get it, they'll review it, they have their their checklist and they'll come back and provide comments if they see if if there's some deficiencies in in the reporting of things uh of that nature. Um, you also started, um, I believe last year, you uh may maybe that was your first year of um applying for the J F A award in Excellence in Financial Reporting to get that certificate, certificate in terms of excellence in financial reporting. And so that goes to J F A and and they go through a more rigorous review of your financial statements and just make sure you got statistical information in there, letter transmittal and and other required information other than what you would see in in a in a basic set of financial statements. And so that goes to them as well. And the city normally um submits that along with the application. And then also, um, we do help the city with um some of the D C A reporting and um and and send that to uh this finance director to review and make sure that she's or he is good with uh that information uh prior to submitting it as well.
Thank you um for the edification of public. I think that's very important because we have done it since two thousand and eighteen, which is the first year we reported. So this narrative is circulating in the public. I do not want them to think that this council hasn't been um good fiscal stewards of this money. Although I do welcome and I'm looking forward to learning more about our operational audits because we can always improve in those areas. So thank you both for your presentations.
Welcome.
All right, uh, seeing no one else in the queue, um, I just want to make a few closing comments and ask a question. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I do see uh Councilman Sebastian has his hand up. I'm sorry, I didn't see. Uh, is your queue not working, Councilman Sebastian?
It actually is not. Um, but thank you for recognizing me. Um, first of all, I thank you for arranging for the presentation, for the audits. I I do have a question for our staff. Hearing that they, and I knew this before, that there was an audit being performed for the Parks Department and then I just heard one being mentioned for purchasing. I wanted to just ask a question. How are we selecting the departments to go through uh these audits and if there's a timetable or a schedule as to when the departments, um, other departments are going to come um on board for the same audit? Right? Because I I just think that with some of the of the departments, again, being sort of the new guy, some of the of the departments that I think have um definite operational issues or or can do with some improvements that uh we ought to look at somehow prioritizing um those. I'm not saying it's not being done already, but I just need to know uh how it's been done.
That's so, Councilman Sebastian, I'll I'll uh take that one. Um, so in regards to Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs, uh, we had some changes in the way we were running one of our our programs and specifically our tennis program. And uh there were some questions that had come up on registration, were we using our uh registration system uh for our participants? And so uh in order to, you know, address that question and to determine how best to um account for, you know, anybody that was registering for our programs, we decided to do the audit of that particular department first. Um, so that's that's essentially how that one started out. Uh, purchasing, uh, you know, we have purchase cards and of course, we, as Councilmember Rowell mentioned, we always want to be good stewards of taxpayer money and we just felt like it was necessary to uh look at our purchasing uh procedures and then purchases that were made through, you know, P cards and um have, you know, an auditor look at that. We have not started that process yet, but that was, you know, as she, as uh Ms. Leighton Dixon mentioned to you, that was one of the departments that we have discussed, um, having them look at.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. At some point in time, would you come back to us with sort of a a schedule of departments? Thank you, Madam City Manager. At some point in time, would you come back to us with sort of a, a schedule of departments? Because um, I, I think it would be good to know that at least and maybe how long that will take.
Yes, and I mean, as our auditors mentioned, you know, I, I think that is a very good recommendation that we look at doing the operational and performance audits. And um, as they've mentioned, you know, we have had some changes in, in leadership in various departments. So uh, we want to uh do our very best to make sure um, you know, we're following policies and procedures. So I welcome that recommendation and I will definitely be, be working with our finance director to uh make a recommendation on schedules of which departments we need to have uh them look at.
Thank you much, Madam City Manager.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Sebastian. Um, thank, and I want to thank you all so much for this presentation. We, we've gone way over time, but I do think that it's, it's really important. Um, clarity is our friend. I know when I was running, I had several constituents calling for a forensic audit, so I was calling for a forensic audit. Um, after, after speaking with you all offline and seeing this presentation, I'm even more convinced that what we probably need is an operational audit, especially of our contracts, our city contracts, who we're contracting with and how contracts are constructed, if they are the most efficient way for us to do business. However, um, and, and so I, 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 I would hope, this isn't going to be our only discussion of this issue. I, I would, I would hope that we would expand that to one or two departments. But as I was recommending, you know, an overall uh operational audit. I do want to say that is not to, that is not to foreclose um on any possibility of the forensic audit. On the chat going wild, saying, you know, I want all the audits, I want a forensic audit, I want an operational audit. And look, it's your money, taxpayers, it's your money. So if that's what you want to do with it, I think that's what we should do. And I, I'm never gonna push against forensic audit too much because I don't want people saying, why are you pushing so much against this forensic audit? Um, but, but I do think that operational audit is probably what we need and so I want to thank you for that. But I, I, I want to ask, because I heard a couple of different timelines. Were we to start this audit, let's say in April uh for our city departments, we're a little bit smaller than Gwinnett, and we also got way less money than Gwinnett, Mr. Moses. Um, what is the timeline you think it would be for, to complete an operational audit of our entire city? And I, not a hard and fast number, but around, can you give us a ballpark of what that would cost our, our city without budget?
We'll turn that over to Mr. David Roberts because that's in his.
A- a- absolutely. So Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, um, if, if everything runs smoothly in terms of getting uh access to, to people and information timely, uh ninety days, ninety days for a draft report. So um, if, if things don't go smoothly, then, you know, add, add another thirty to forty-five days to do that. Um, but that, that's, that's our typical, typical range um in, in doing. Uh, what Gwinnett's doing is doing it a little bit differently in terms of separating departments out into multiple phases. Um, and, and so that's, you certainly could do that model as well. But if you were to do everything simultaneously, then, then typically uh ninety days. Uh, in, in terms of fees, it, it, it really determines, or it really depends on level of scope um that, that you want to get into and, and how deep of a dive that you want and how detailed you want the report to be. Um, you know, I, I think I, I've seen these things vary widely in range and they vary widely in terms of benefit. Um, I, I, I think if, 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 if I were to give you a quote to do something that I obviously would be proud of and add significant value to the, to the city, I, I think citywide on a very, you know, very low end, high level would be something uh around eighty thousand dollars. I, I think on a high end, it, it would be something closer to two hundred thousand. Um, and, and again, lots of levels and different levels in, in terms of, of scope and what you actually get and how deep of a dive, you know, as part of this, you know, you could embed the looking at, at the contracts. You could embed looking at grants, and we talked about some of the ARP funds. So that can be embedded within the scope, especially with some of the, the larger scope for dollar items as well.
All right, thank you so much. Um, I, I see now that we, that we do have two more hands. I do just want to be uh cognizant of our time. We have a zoning hearing that is supposed to start in five minutes. And we have five more topics in this work session. Uh, and so first I would just like to check in with uh our parliamentarian, uh, which I guess tonight would be Ms. Burnett or Mr. Mr. Adams, if you could let us know if we were to, um, can we, can we hold the rest of this agenda until after the zoning hearing? We only have one zoning item and then pick this back up?
I think this five minutes back, but I, I can take it. You may, if you wanted to, you may recess and come back um to this meeting. It, was that the question?
Yes. So, so what I'm gonna do is, uh, I, I see Councilwoman Williams, she has not spoken. And then I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Willis if we could uh do a motion for recess, handle the business of our zoning hearing at six o'clock and then come back for the rest of this agenda. Clearly, we will be talking about this audit in uh upcoming work sessions. So we may just need to have a, a little audit section, uh, but I do want to be respectful for all of our other presenters. We do have five more presenters. So Councilwoman Willis.
Mayor, Mayor, can we get consensus on that? Um, because one of the reasons we are falling behind time is because you included public comments on our work session and that was not a part of our process.
Oh, oh, all right. So Councilwoman Willis, I'm gonna ask you to wait to be acknowledged. Uh, we can definitely get consensus. I think that hearing from our public is always important and they should be a part of every conversation that we're having. But I'm going to go now to Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor, um, for recognizing me. I really just have one very quick question. And I think this is a question probably for Tammy because during her presentation, she said something about and a company that's performing an audit. So I just want to be clear in my mind who's auditing what and what's being audited as we're considering what's the best audit for us to have citywide. So if, if we could just get um our city manager to come back and refresh my memory on what she said. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We are currently using a firm called um Ru- Ru- Rush and, and Ms. Layton Dixon, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and we were using them for uh the recreation and cultural affairs um audit. Uh, we chose to use them because we, you know, wanted to have sense of eyes to look at what was going on. I mean, and we had a great relationship with Marvin and Jenkins. It wasn't anything that had to do with that. Uh, but we knew they were also gonna be starting our internal auditing process. Um, so uh, or our financial auditing process, pardon me. So that's why we were using that particular uh firm to do uh that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, I, I do want to take moderator's privilege and check in with our council about recessing the rest of our work session agenda so that we can have our six o'clock zoning hearing on time. Could I just get a quick consensus from council? Uh, uh, Mr. Adams?
This is what, sir? Jim, you want a consensus vote?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Raul?
May I, may I interrupt for a second, Miss, Miss Chair? Uh, a motion must be made for recess and then a vote taken.
All right. Uh, I will, I will entertain a motion for recess.
I move to recess. Oh.
All right, Dr. Raul.
I, I, I move to recess and um, it's, Ms. Burnett, re- repeat how you want it. It's to reconvene the public hearing or to start the public hearing? Is that okay? I moved to recess the work session and move to open up the public hearing.
Say.
All right, Mr. Adams, would you, would you call them?
Yes, we have a motion uh by Councilmember Raul, seconded by Councilmember Reeves to recess the work session and convene the zoning public hearing. Roll call vote, Councilmember Raul?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Hi.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Hi.
That vote was approved unanimously. The work session is recessed at six oh one. And Mr. Mayor, uh, you will call to order the zoning public hearing and also remind uh Mayor Council that if you could switch over momentarily in novice agenda for the zoning hearing. Or since there's one case, we, we could maintain the current uh, uh, but if, but if you want to have discussion, uh, we would have to switch over to uh the zoning public hearing meeting.
All right, I, I'll, I'll go ahead and switch over the speakers queue. And uh, now call to order this meeting. Did you want to take the roll again?
Yes, this is a roll call for the zoning public hearing, six PM, City of South Fulton, City Council. The Honorable Mayor, Kalie?
Present.
The Honorable Councilmember for District One, Catherine F. Raul. The Honorable Councilmember for District Two, Carmelita Gums.
Present.
The Honorable Councilmember for District Three, Helen Z. Willis.
Present.
The Honorable Councilmember for District Four, J.C. Sebastian.
Present.
The Honorable Councilmember for District Five, Corey A. Reeves.
Uh, Councilor.
The Honorable Councilmember for District Six, Natasha Williams.
Present.
And the Honorable Councilmember for District Seven, Mark Baker.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, please sound the first item.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay. First item of the zoning public hearing. Presentation should be coming up shortly. Rezoning variance modification cases for presentation and public hearing only. First case is U twenty-one dash zero zero six, request a special use permit for a nail salon at three two two zero Butler Road, Suite one three six. This is located in District Two. Staff?
Yes, good afternoon, Council. Do you have my presentation?
Yes, uh, coming up now.
Okay, yes, sir.
Should it be visible?
There we go. Okay, next slide, please. So this is a special use permit application for a nail salon. The nail salon was, there was previously a nail salon at this location, but the previous business was closed for a period of more than thirty days. And so the zoning code requires them to be in compliance with the new zoning code that was updated by Council in December of twenty twenty. And that code in particular requires that um, a certain list of personal care services receives special use permits and on that list is nail salons. Um, the future land use is community live work and the current zoning is mixed use. So the nail salon as it is, is in compliance with both the zoning and the future land use. Next slide, please. This is an idea of where it is. It's at the intersection of Camp Creek and Butler Road, a little bit to the south of the stream there. Um, and you can see it highlighted here on the screen. It is in the shopping center facing Butler Road. Next slide, please. This is the future land use. You can see that it's in the community live work corridor. And you can also see that the site is zone mixed use. There are some shops there facing Butler Road and then behind it is townhomes. Next slide, please. And staff is recommending approval on the nail salon. And that actually concludes our report today.
Okay, uh, is there, are there speakers for and against?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you have to open up um the public hearing uh for this. And to answer your question, when you do open up the public hearing, uh, we did not receive any comments in support or in opposition.
Uh, we'll, we'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we did not receive any comments in support or in opposition to this uh requ- requested uh use permit.
All right, well, with that, I'm going to, to close the public hearing and solicit any questions or comments from council. I see Dr. Raul in the queue.
I just wanted to ask, in that plaza, are there any other nail or beauty salons?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I didn't, both or i- it's another nail salon in there or just a beauty salon?
No, ma'am. There isn't another nail salon right there right now. There is um two other hair salons. I know one is operational. And I think the other one was temporarily closed, but it might be open again. So there are two hair salons, but no nail salons.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I always like to uh make sure that we hear from the councilperson whose district represents this. Councilwoman Gums, did you have any questions or comments at this time?
No, I did not. Um, this is an existing business that closed for thirty days and they have to go through this process. So they're going through this process so they can uh reopen and get back to business.
Thank you so much for that clarification. All right, if that is uh it, then we will close this uh zoning hearing. I will take a motion to uh entertain a motion to end this zoning hearing. And if you wanna, if we can make a uh, a combined motion to end the zoning hearing and reconvene the recessed work session.
I'd like to make a motion to uh end.
Adjourn, adjourn, adjourn the zoning public hearing.
To adjourn um the zoning hearing and um reopen work session. Don't we have a vote?
So move. We vote at the regular council meeting.
Oh, that's right. But there's a motion on the floor to re.
So move. So move. Mayor, you ready for me to carry the vote?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Gums, seconded by Councilmember Reeves to adjourn the zoning public hearing and reopen the work session. So roll call vote, Councilmember Raul.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Hi.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Baker?
Hi.
All right, the zoning public hearing is adjourned at six ten PM and we are back into the work session meeting.
All right, uh, Mr. Adams, would you? All right, uh, Mr. Adams, would you sound the next item in the work session, please?
May I interrupt? You guys have to make a motion to reconvene as you recessed previously.
We did a combined motion, was that not all right? The Attorney Vernette?
The, the preference would have been just to adjourn that last meeting and then come back to this one and reconvene this one.
Entertain a motion to reconvene this meeting.
I'll move to reconvene the work session. Second.
Call the vote, count, uh,
Ro- roll call vote to reconvene, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Hi.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Hi.
We are reconvening the work session at six eleven P M.
Mayor?
Yeah. Yes, Councilwoman Willis?
Um, when we, um, recessed to go into the, um, public hearing, I had my hand, hand up because I had another question concerning the audit. I misunderstood you. Were you saying that you were gonna let me ask my question once we came back? Or you weren't going to allow me to ask my, ask my question until the next time we had a meeting? Because I didn't.
Hey, uh, sorry, sorry about that misunderstanding. Yes, I am going to ask you. Uh, you don't have to wait until the next time we have a meeting. Uh, Mr. Moses and David are going to be sending the entire presentation to all of Council, and so you can definitely follow up with them. But we did talk about the issue for an hour, and we do have five more issues on the agenda. So at this point, I am going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Mr. Adams, would you sign that next, uh, sound that next item, please?
Yes, the next item under presentations is number two. Return to in-person meetings. This will be presented by Tammy Sadler Jones, City Manager.
Ms. Sadler Jones?
Yes, good, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council again. Um, on February the first, I sent you a detailed memo um, that lays out the plan for returning to in-person council meetings beginning February twenty-second. Um, the City Manager's Office, I convened a team of internal staff to develop a plan um, that focused in on ensuring the safety of our employees, uh, constituents, while continuing to practice social distancing. Um, I just wanted to highlight, um, the, the certain areas of that plan that was sent to you previously. And Mr. Adams, I don't know if you have a copy of the layout of the Southwest Arts Center? Because some of the things I was going to go over had to do with, um, uh, you know, the layout of the facility. But, um, the main entrance doors, uh, will open at three P M. With access to the lobby area only for attendees to complete public comment cards and to pick up copies of the council agenda. Um, the Thor, the doors, pardon me, to the theater will open at three thirty, uh, for attendees um, to take their seat, uh, because of course the meeting will begin at four P M. Um, the capacity seating, in order to maintain social distancing, um, we initially had recommended two hundred people. The facility holds about three seventy-five. We were reducing that, uh, by about fifty percent. Um, you know, we, we want to try to be as safe as possible. And so we, uh, the team got together and we decided that we would go back to reduce that even further to at least a hundred and fifty people. So that means that as far as the seating, um, it will be, um, a maximum of two people together. Uh, each group of two will have an empty seat before another set of two seats, um, uh, will be next to those individuals. And we will, of course, have signage placed on the seats that, uh, would, you know, identify which seats need to be left, um, empty. And, um, the next thing I wanted to talk about was, um, the entrances. You know, we are going to be allowing individuals to enter, enter the two double doors to the right side of the main entrance. Um, everyone entering the building will be, will be required to wear a mask. Uh, they will have their temperatures checked. We will have temperature check kiosks um, at our entrance doors, entrance doors. And of course, they will have to go through a security checkpoint. Um, if the temperature kiosk alerts that someone, you know, has a temperature, uh, that individual will be denied entry and asked to leave the building. We will have hand sanitizing stations um, in addition to additional face masks available for our attendees. Uh, we also will be looking at trying to do a Q R code um, where, you know, if people, we, we're gonna have a sign-in sheet. Uh, so people will be asked to sign in, and of course, we're doing that in case we have to do any contact tracing. Uh, but again, we're gonna also try to implement a Q R code process as well, where people will enter in their temperatures and their contact information um, for those individuals that have access to a mobile device. And then, of course, we will have, uh, sheets available uh, for individuals to sign in who do not, you know, feel comfortable using a mobile device. Um, staff will, uh, be, uh, providing comment cards. Those can be picked up, you know, in advance of the meeting. Of course, as I mentioned, you can pick up agendas. I've mentioned the public seating. Um, council members, you know, we, uh, have on the screen here where you will be entering and exiting uh, for the meeting, where you will be sitting, where staff will be sitting. And, um, Mr. Um, James Hammond uh, will also be assisting us with all the audio visual needs for the meeting. Uh, Southwest Arts Center staff will be providing all the microphones for public comments. We're trying to make sure that we try to eliminate as much as possible people touching the microphone, so those will be um, placed on the floor for your individuals to just walk up. Uh, we are also looking at trying to offer a hybrid model. We know that everybody is not able to uh, come back into in-person meetings, so we will uh, try our very best to, uh, remain televising our meetings on the Zoom platform. And of course, we will allow speakers to choose whether or not they want to join virtually, to be seen by the council and the public, uh, during the public comment section. And, uh, Mr. Hammond will be assisting us in providing, uh, uh, large television screens, you know, during the council meetings as well. Um, let's see. The other thing I wanted to mention again, you know, all attendees will be required to go through a security checkpoint in the building. Our South Fulton Police Department, uh, will be assisting us in those efforts. Also to oversee the parking lot and to provide traffic control, um, in and out of the Southwest Arts Center. Um, we, you know, we have tried to think of everything we could. I know that, uh, other questions have come up about, you know, the, the process. But, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, again, we have tried to cover all the necessary bases um, in, in, in hopes of, you know, being able to have a, uh, a, a, a good, you know, process for our public to enter in and exit and uh, observe the, uh, public meeting and also stay safe at the very same time. And of course, you know, this is February, uh, the eighth today. We are continuing to monitor the, uh, reports that we get from the C D C and also the Fulton County, uh, Board of Health. Our fire department is always providing those to me, um, to help out with the numbers, and we'll continue to watch those, you know, over the coming weeks. But that is essentially my report. Uh, again, just for the public, you see the, you know, where you're gonna be entering and exiting the building. And I do want to specifically thank our Special Projects Manager, Jamila Chris, um, our, uh, Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs Director, Travis Landrum. I want to thank our, um, I T., our communications team, um, all of our staff, Assistant City Manager, who have helped to put this plan together in hopes that this council, um, will, um, um, appreciate, you know, the efforts that we put in trying to lay out uh, a good plan for going back in person. Uh, this, you know, plan does specifically talk about council meetings. Uh, we are working on, um, you know, if it is the will of this council to do in-person uh, work sessions, you know, initially, a few weeks ago, I did make a recommendation for Burdette uh, Gym as a location that was available. Um, and we will continue to look at, you know, that location and continue to look at Southwest Arts Center as potential locations for, um, our work sessions. And then the last thing I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, is that we have worked with our staff to secure the Southwest Arts Center through May twenty twenty-two. And then, of course, you know, we would need to probably, um, work with them to see if they can accommodate us at another location, uh, another city facility, uh, for the rest of the year. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for, uh, not only the presentation, but I want to thank all of our city staff for, for working, um, diligently on this. I, I did just have two quick follow-up questions before we, uh, open up to the rest of Council. Uh, is there an R S V P process for this meeting, or will it just be first come, first served?
At this point, Mayor, I mean, being a public meeting, I would recommend that it just be first come, first served. But of course, we will, um, have staff stationed, um, at the doors to monitor the capacity uh, within the building, uh, during, you know, the, the time of the meetings.
All right, thank you. And, and then, uh, believing in science and, and knowing that all the science is, is showing us, including from, uh, Dr. Paxton, our Director of, uh, Public Health, that vaccinations greatly and boosters greatly reduce the likelihood of death, uh, from COVID, even if there are breakthrough infections. Have we given any thought to requiring proof of vaccinations for in-person attendees?
I mean, of course, you know, we've had conversations about it, um, in the past. But for this meeting, uh, uh, this particular public meeting, I did not think that it was a need to do proof of vaccination. Uh, but again, you know, that would be up to the council what you want to do, but it is not my recommendation that we do proof of vaccines, uh, at this time.
All right, thank you. And I see Dr. Ral in the queue. This is in her district, so of course she will get to go first, Dr. Ral.
Um, thank you for that presentation. Um, this is a follow-up to the question I asked at the last meeting. Are we looking, uh, at a hybrid model as it relates to work sessions? Because we do know that space is a challenge for us until we kind of deal with these renovations we have across the city, which, you know, I think it's gonna be great in the end right now, so it's kind of an inconvenience. But, um, it, it makes sense to me, at least, if the work sessions, if we don't have a place to keep those virtual and have the actual meetings in person, if we're limited by space. I'm very concerned about having, uh, residents run to different locations and not being clear where we are at any given meeting. Have you looked into that at all, or how could we facilitate that kind of setup?
Um, you know, yes, we're, we're looking into it. Our, our main focus was trying to, to focus on the February twenty-second, um, council meeting. But, um, we, you know, again, we will look at other facilities to see if we can accommodate for our work session. And I mean, I do agree with you. I don't, I don't think it's in the best interest of the city to have, you know, one meeting over here one week, another meeting, and, you know, it confuses the public. I think we need to have some consistency. Um, you know, we're gonna have our council meetings at this location for a certain amount of time. Then we need to, you know, find another location to have our work sessions, um, for a certain amount of time. But then also, you know, we do have to take into consideration, at some point, we do have other boards that, you know, may start to have a need to work, um, or meet publicly. So we need to take that into consideration too. And I know you had asked the question whether or not, um, if the council chose to do another, uh, ordinance to go back virtually uh, until we're able to find space for work sessions, whether or not that could be done. And in consultation with the city attorney, that answer was yes.
With that being said, um, um, Mayor, I, I would hope that we could at our, uh, in-person meeting on the twenty-sixth, I mean, twenty-second, that we continue the virtual option for the work session until we figure this out. Because like she says, we have multiple boards there meeting virtually, and I just don't see how we have space to accommodate these boards' meetings, so, um, all right, hopefully you're amenable to that. Um, and so at least the council meetings are in person.
Absolutely. Uh, I think that that is a fine idea. Um, I, and I'm actually not opposed. I, I understand that we will have this, this space until May, so for February, March, April, and May. I, I think that it might be a good idea until we have a permanent city hall that every four, four to six months we do move, uh, just the council meeting around so that our citizens can see all of our city and get a sense of the breadth of our city. Right now, I, I am driving all the way across town to City Hall in District One, and then I'll be driving all the way across town to the council meetings in, in District One. And I, and I'm fine with that. I think that we all should move around and see our city. I do have a question, though, um, Madam City Ma- Manager. Uh, or, or this is actually for the city attorney. The, the the emergency ordinance to for us to meet virtually was really sort of preconditioned on COVID. So you're saying, uh, Madam Attorney, that we can do an ordinance that says that some meetings are in person and the rest are virtual?
Mayor, I am not sure what previous advice was provided to the city manager. Um, we would have to discuss, um, how that would be played out. However, uh, without the emergency underlying basis of an emergency for COVID that will allow us to be virtual, um, we wouldn't be able to, um, have any virtual meetings. So if we're going in person, it would not make sense to, uh, have a hybrid format where